Have their car. And where are they going to park safely and legally in the city of LA every night? So that's what we do.
So we get a lot of blocking the sidewalk, open bottle containers, jaywalking tickets. A lot of times they get their driver's licenses suspended or they have bad credit and that's a barrier to housing. And so removing all that really helps.
So the situation right now is so horrific, right? We already have people camping on the streets. It's not sanitary, it's not safe, and it's a public health hazard. So why don't we just do it in a more dignified way? And that's what Cardboard Gummy represents.
I have a home right now, but I would like to know some information because I have people, friends, all over in LA that they are homeless. And I want to see if I can help them.
And most of the people we see are people we knew when they were housed. People in Milwaukee are not becoming homeless and say, "I'm going to go to LA." People in LA who are homeless started out in LA. So we're basically just helping our neighbors and helping our neighbors navigate the system.
We don't have enough shelters. We can't build them fast enough. So that's why this is an immediate intervention that people need to support and we need to really do this.
From helping those experiencing homelessness to helping our veterans. Many don't know where to find the help they need, but a recent resource fair offered them one-stop shop for a variety of services.
The event is called Stand Down by military terms. Basically, what it is, is that resource event where we're hoping more veterans will show up and they will find out there's job training, job reentry, mental health, home loans, all kinds of stuff that the veteran or the current military member can qualify for.
Art is a part of the Children and Family Wellness Working Group. And he really had this idea of creating a resource fair, which is a stand-down, and really connecting families and veterans and services all throughout northeast LA. And I thought that was a really great idea because I do see a lot of veterans in northeast LA. I'm also local and I don't see a lot of events for veterans. So I really just wanted to take a part in that and help support and connect veterans with all the services that they have in greater Los Angeles.
Sometimes you have to make adjustments of getting yourself in good health, mental health, and taking care of the issues that are preventing you to be successful. It's there if you want it.
Spring has sprung and folks in Silmar celebrated the occasion with what else? An egg hunt, of course, with a little health fair mixed in.
So today at Silmar Rec Center, we have our annual egg hunt. This year, we are incorporating a health and safety fair to provide valuable information and resources to our community. We have various arts and crafts, games, different booths that have information. We will be having our actual egg hunt for all children ages zero to 12 years old.
Having this event here definitely brings a lot of awareness to the programming classes that we do offer here on a year-round basis. So our main focus is to keep the families together, bring them out for a special time. That way, everyone can have fun.
Over at Exposition Park, folks enjoy their own spring festival, which featured family fun, including rides, live music, balloon making, and lots of roses.
Expo Center holds an annual spring festival. So we thought it'd be great this year to host it in the Exposition Park Rose Garden. I mean, we have over 60,000 different types of roses. This is a very historic garden and it's operated and owned by the City of Los Angeles, Department of Recreation and Parks. And so we thought it'd be great for folks to come in and smell the roses and just have a lot of fun.
Besides your presentation, what was the highlight of the thing?
Being able to take pictures here by the fountain and enjoy the flowers, be here as a group. It's our first time being here as a whole group and taking these lovely pictures.
My first years, I never been here and the roses, but the roses, but this event is beautiful for the family and then entertaining for the kids is fun. I love it.
In Lincoln Heights, a brand-new playground is brightening the neighborhood and encouraging outdoor play.
Three, two, one, go!
I started in the department 30 years ago. In 1990, this was my second assignment. So this is very special to me and this community will always be special to me.
We hosted a community meeting here and the community was very excited about this new playground.
You know, as a five-years-old, they love parks. They need to go outside. And there's not that many around in this block, so.
To be able to dedicate this wonderful structure, the shade, the kids do not have to be in the sun, they can play all day.
The community of Lincoln Heights said, "You know what? We want this playground to be interactive. We want it to be quality. And we want it to be accessible for children in this community that we know are living with disabilities."
Look here, what you've done. From a dusty little place that nobody cared to play, it has turned into beautiful, beautiful treasures. And so to see these young kids now play, I feel like being a little kid. I wish I could be their age, I can enjoy this beautiful park.
This park serves as a social recreational fixture in the community and we're happy to support many adventures and friendships that will be made here.
My son is five, so he's very excited. We've been waiting for quite some time.
The LAPD Museum puts on a carnival for the community. A new furry member joins the LA Zoo family and Westwood gets a new stop sign. All this in City Beat.
LAPD's Northeast Division recently held a community carnival in Glassell Park. Proceeds benefited the LAPD museum. Both kids and families enjoyed rides, games, and naturally yummy funnel cake. The LA Zoo recently added a member to its family with the birth of a new female zebra foal. The first such birth since 1988, the zoo welcomes visitors to come say hello to the cute new baby girl. And 5th District Councilmember Paul Corretts recently welcomed a new stop sign to the intersection of Kelton and Massachusetts in Westwood. A recent surge in traffic has led to a surge in accidents and the new signage will help to curtail that.
They don't have to watch for somebody plowing through at 60 miles an hour. Now there will be much greater safety.
The ribbon is cut and it's time to play hoops. LA's all-girl Sacred Heart High School celebrates a brand-new gymnasium.
This gym has been in the making for 20, 25, 30 years and it's a huge achievement for us. We were one of the only Catholic all-girls school in the archdiocese without a gym.
I was a student athlete, so having to practice at Lincoln Park and having to have our games there was difficult just because we wouldn't get a lot of support because it was off-campus. So the fact that it's on-campus now, the girls will be able to have support from their fellow comments.
We believe that young girls and young women deserve that same opportunity as young boys and men. And so we're just happy that now we have this over here on the east side of the city.
We cannot wait to make new memories in our brand-new gymnasium.
Coming to Sacred Heart without a gym was still a great experience, but having a gym is just an extra wow.
Sacred Heart is a place where our teachers, staff, and coaches encourage us to be the best versions of ourselves possible.
Thank you to everyone who helped this dream of ours come true.
Enjoy free pancakes during a pop-up art show, raise awareness on homelessness while listening to stories from those living on the streets, and enjoy the cultural diversity of a Southeast European Film Festival. All this and things to do.
Don't miss the return of the Los Angeles Pancakes and Booze Art Show. This underground pop-up art show celebrates 10 years of serving free pancakes and introducing SoCal residents to some of the nation's leading emerging artists. This two-day event will include body painting, live DJs, and more. It's all happening at the Los Angeles Pancakes and Booze Art Show, May 3rd and 4th, beginning at 8:00 PM. The show is set to take over Lot 613 located at 613 Imperial Street. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite.com. Homeward LA is gearing up to take over LA Performance Spaces. This traveling theater company will put up a series of productions featuring monologues based on stories from people who have experienced homelessness. Funds raised from the event will go to the Midnight Mission. So do your part to support homelessness awareness and the arts by attending Homeward LA. Production begins April 26 and runs through May 5. For performance times and venues, visit homewardla.org. Travel halfway around the globe without leaving your hometown. The 14th Annual Southeast European Film Festival can take you there. This film festival showcases the cultural diversity of Southeast Europe and fosters cultural exchange through its annual presentations of films from that region. Sneak a peek at how the other half lives at the Southeast European Film Festival, happening May 1st through the 8th. For a complete listing of festival programs and venues, visit sefestla.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Wemma Rashid. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next week for more LA This Week.
Wednesday and Friday, Mr. Smith? Yeah, my switch is on. You can hear me? Are you ready for your presentation, sir? Very well.
Thank you, Madam President. It's an honor to be with you today. And to, in a way, it's a very special double honor for me to recognize a very special unit of the LAPD today. Today, we are celebrating 50 years of the robbery homicide division. And it is a spectacular history of LAPD. It was started in 1969 shortly after the assassination of Robert F. Kennedy, when LAPD assigned a tremendous amount of resources to investigating the murder of Robert Kennedy. After which, it was really determined that LAPD needed a specialized unit that would take these really big cases without drawing personnel from all the divisions of the city. In the city of L.A., we have 21 geographic divisions, four moral divisions, all have detectives. But we decided in LAPD in 1969, we need a very specialized unit that did nothing but really tough, big cases. And in the history of this unit, they've handled some of the biggest cases in Los Angeles history. Of the original 24 detectives that were assigned to RHD, there are now 75 detectives with nine civilian employees that support the department. It is headed up by Captain William Hayes, who is here today, along with Commander Ann Clark, who is acting commander of detectives, who is with us as well today. It started off with just robbery homicide, has expanded over the years to include specialized units who do gang homicides, cold case homicides, something I'll talk about in just a moment, special assault, sexual assault unit, special investigations, known as SIS, in our administrative unit. Over the years it has been in existence, RHD has become world-renowned for its tremendous development of innovative strategies in detective work, crime scene management, and interrogation techniques. It has been known for what it is cases, the cases that no one else could handle, and is the way that they've gone about handling these huge cases, the ones you are very familiar with, the Tate La Bianca murders, or better known as Charlie Manson murders, the SLA shootout, the Hillside Strangler, the Night Stalker, the NBA player Jack Molinas murder, the Solomon family disappearance, the North Hollywood shootout, the Grim Sleeper, which, by the way, RHD filed on 16 murders, and that serial murder case that went on for 30 years, they know of 26 that the guy probably committed, but they were able to get convictions on 16 murders, and the Western Bandit series. Currently, a number of our detectives are working on the Robert Dirce case, a huge case going on that involves numerous states that LAPD is heading up. It has truly been an incredible, incredible run with LHD and the recognition worldwide is, that's one of our friends back there, is well-known because of the kind of people that are in it, the extraordinary detectives who are the experts around the world in what they do handling the really big cases. On a personal note, I was very fortunate to be the first reserve officer ever to be allowed to work in RHD 14 years ago, and with the help of one gentleman I want to recognize today, who was my partner at the time, Marty Maharo. Wait a minute, Marty was my seatmate, he guided me through the case, we were able to get a conviction on a 16-year-old murder where a man was stabbed 103 times. These are the kind of things these people do, they are extraordinary detectives, they are the people the chief of police calls when there's a big, bad case that needs to be resolved, and these are the best of LAPD and some of the best in the world. And so, I'm very honored to introduce to you today Captain Will Hayes, who is the captain of RHD, to talk a little bit about what his incredible detectives are doing. Captain Hayes?
Thank you, Councilman Smith, and want to thank you for your dedication and time that you put in with us on a daily basis. You, before coming back to the council, were there almost every day working on cases, which was greatly appreciated. I appreciate the acknowledgement of the work that these fine detectives do. One of the things that I think is a misnomer is that over the years, because of the notoriety of the cases, that it's believed that we only handle all the cases that are people that are famous or infamous in the city of Los Angeles, and that's not the case. These detectives work every day helping people that are the victims of violent crimes, whether it's the individuals, those that run mom-and-pop stores, that are the victims of robberies, the disenfranchised young ladies that are out sexually assaulted and brutally murdered that go years without being solved. And they put in tremendous amount of time and effort, at great personal toll to themselves, with sacrifices away from their families. So, I really do appreciate the acknowledgement by the council for the great work that these people have done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Captain, we are happy to present to you this recognition of 50 years of extraordinary work with LAPD. We're going to take a couple of pictures here, and then we're all going to go back and take some formal pictures, but...
Thank you very much.
For you. Thank you. Where's Becky? There's Becky.
Good luck with that.
Walk this way, as they say.
Everybody's going to be invited to the back, by the council member and the staff, for some additional folks. Straight to the back.
Members, if you just, please help me welcome a group of students from my district, from Liggett Street Elementary School, from Panorama City. You want to stand up, boys and girls? Just give them a big welcome. These boys and girls are visiting City Hall to further their passion on decision-making and government, and I also want to recognize their teachers that are here, Mrs. Hernandez Toledo, are you here? Wave. There she is, and how about Mrs. Reyes, are you here? Thank you very much for bringing the students here today. Wave so you can see yourself on TV. There you go. Welcome, I hope you enjoy your field trip this morning. Thank you very much for being here. You're welcome. Mr. Bloomingfield, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
It is a 15-year anniversary of an organization that was started by the folks who are standing with me here, the Andrews. And I want to tell you a little bit about this organization, because I'm incredibly proud of them and the work that they do, and I want to make you all a little jealous, because they're in my district, but also to let you know that you can be part of it, because they want to expand not just throughout the city, but throughout the country, and they're already on their way to doing that. Mr. O'Farrell, you have the Hollywood Walk of Fame in your district, which is fantastic. And in many ways, it inspired this organization, the Walk of Hearts. Because what they do, instead of creating a Walk of Fame, where you're glorifying our celebrities, and this is L.A., we want to do that, they created a Walk of Hearts, where we glorify our teachers. And so, what they've done, they created this, and Joe, I'm sure, will tell you the story of how the vision came to him to do this. But every year, they scour our schools, and they come up with several teachers who've done extraordinary work over the course of their lifetime. And then, they award them the Walk of Hearts. And we all go out to the street, and we have the unveiling, just like you do for the Walk of Fame, but it's incredibly moving, we have the teachers around, the students, people who've been impacted over the lifetime of this teacher's work, and it's just incredible. It started off in Canoga Park, and now, we've moved, we were so successful, they were so successful. I like to say "we" because I've been part of this for a long time, going to their events and participating in it, but I get to do that as either Assembly member or the council member, they're the ones who have driven this.
It's okay, Bob, it's "we."
It's "we," all right, well, Joe's giving me the "we," so I, thank you. But they've been doing it for 15 years, and so many lives and teachers have been touched. And now, we have it right along Westfield, as being a partner in that, and helping us pay for putting the Walk of Hearts along the sidewalk in front of their village. So, it's pretty amazing, and I wanted you to hear from them, I wanted us to honor them as a city, so we've got a certificate for you for all that you've done. 70 teachers over these 15 years have been honored. So, why don't I turn it over to you, Joe, or Katie, to talk a little bit about the organization and how amazing it is? Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob, thank you, Councilman, appreciate that. My name is Joe, and this is my wife Katie. Yes, as Bob was saying, that we all know that the Hollywood Walk of Fame adequately and should honor those that have been in film, or whatever it is, but before, there was an actor and actress that won an Academy Award, there was somebody behind them, and that was a teacher. And 15 years ago, we started the Walk of Hearts, it's a Walk of Fame for teachers, and as Bob was saying, every year, we embed bronze plaques in the sidewalk honoring educators throughout Los Angeles. And when you mentioned scouring schools, I thought you meant we had to go clean something up. So, thank you, Bob, for your support over the last 15 years. We are expanding it, Bob was able to get us to speak at the National League of Cities. We're now talking to three other cities throughout the United States, and talking to other communities about having their own Walk of Fame. Our hope and our dream is to expand it as many cities as possible, excuse me, and raise the public's consciousness of what teachers do and how they change lives forever. So, once again, we want to say thank you very much. This Sunday, 10:00 a.m., if you're in the Valley, we'd love to have you come on out, because we're inducting four more teachers into the Walk of Fame. So, thank you to the City Council, thank you, Bob, you've been a great supporter, really appreciate it, and did you...
Thank you, Bob. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to honor the teachers that brought their students today, I think it's fantastic that you're here.
Thank you very much.
That's great, thank you.
And a little something about Joe and Katie, they are so dedicated to this. Their daughter is getting married on Saturday, and the Walk of Hearts is on Sunday, and they're making it all happen without missing a beat. So, let's give them a big round of applause, and please accept this token of appreciation on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and your L.A. City Council and the mayor.
Thank you very much.
You guys want to come and join us?
Councilmember Martinez, if you'd like to make your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, thank you very much. So, today, I would like to recognize an outstanding employee, someone who I'm really proud to call my friend. Ramon Barajas, Assistant General Manager of Recreation and Parks, is retiring today after 37 years of service to the city of Los Angeles. Ramon began his career at the Department of Recreation and Parks in June of 1982 as a special program assistant, and moved to become a gardener caretaker, where his career in landscape and maintenance flourished. He was promoted multiple times and eventually became a principal grounds manager supervisor in 2006. It was during this time that the recession hit us greatly and affected the departments and the parks within our communities. Ramon was instrumental in tackling the challenges of maintaining park standards while working with a greatly reduced staff. But his hard work and creativity helped the department during some of its neediest times. In 2010, he helped launch our city's 50 Parks Initiative, and substantially increased the number of parks and facilities available across the city, specifically focused on dense-populated neighborhoods and communities that lack the sufficient open space and recreational services. In 2015, he was promoted as Assistant General Manager, where he expertly allocated the limited resources available to address the needs and maintenance issues across our 435 parks he oversaw. Ramon has always been ready for the challenge that confronts him, providing creative solutions to issues that arise, always remaining mindful of the park and the community at large. to issues that arise, always remaining mindful of the park and the community at large, and while managing to refurbish some of our more neediest parks, he also makes sure that there's enough clean park space for everyone to enjoy. During his time with the department, he has always embodied the spirit of getting things done, and he takes part in his work, and he shows up on time every time and makes sure the work gets done. One of the reasons Bob and I wanted to honor him today is not only does he live in Bob's district, but Ramon grew up in my district, in the heart of my district, which is the community of Van Nuys. And one of the reasons we bonded so well together is not only do we know the neighborhood and do we remember the neighborhood in terms of what it used to look like, but when my mom first came to this country, she lived in Van Nuys, on Irwin and Sylvan, and all those neighborhoods, which is where Ramon used to do, get into all his troublemaking as a young kid. But one of the things that I love about Ramon, and every time we open a brand-new park in my district, is he understands the need of kids that look like us, and he remembers a time where we didn't always feel safe at our parks, and sometimes that was the only avenue for our parents to sort of help us get through the day, is walking us to the park and sending up, signing up us for sports activities. And one of the things that Ramon and I constantly talk about when we do a grand opening of a park is we want to ensure that the kids in our neighborhoods understand and enjoy our clean parks, our safe parks, but also understand, like we did, the importance of giving back. And this is one man that has never forgotten where he came from, that has always put his family first, and he's always made sure that our kids had some of the nicest playgrounds to play in. And for that, Ramon, I will always, always be indebted for you for not only your dedication and never forgetting where you came from, but to ensure that Wreckin' Parks always maintains our parks for the neediest communities in the City of Los Angeles. I'm going to be, I'm heartbroken. I didn't know he was going to retire. He laid on me when we were opening a brand-new soccer field in North Hills. I'm like, what are you talking about? You're not going anywhere. You're too young. And he said, it's time for me to go. He's had some challenging times in his family. I think his wife needs him. So I want to thank you for letting us have Ramon for so long, for thirty-seven years. I know it takes away from our families and our children, but nevertheless, he is an amazing man, and I'm very, very honored to honor him today. And with that, I want to also have my colleague, Bob Blumenfeld, say a few words.
Thank you, Nuri. And I think you characterize Ramon exactly right, as someone who gets it, who's there. You know, when he's at the parks, and he's not just cutting the ribbon on a park, he understands the community and has been part of our community. Not only does his son go to school in the district, but I've known Ramon, and our lives have intersected for more than twenty years. We first met early, in the early 90s, when I was working for Congressman Berman and we were creating Hanson Dam, the recreation area, specifically trying to build a swimming lake and a pool, and I got to first meet him then. But we didn't really start to work with each other until 2000 or 1999, when I was, had just become Congressman Berman's District Chief of Staff, and he was maintenance, what is it, principal for the whole valley at that point. And so we would have these meetings back then about where things would go and how it would work, and so we got to know each other then, you know, not knowing that our lives would continue to intersect over the years, we'd go different directions, and then, you know, got to develop a little bit of a friendship, and then when I came to the council, and, you know, who is the main guy for the valley and who is someone who understands the valley and Assistant General Manager? It's Ramon. And so we shared that, and I forgot about the parade as well. When we worked on the parade, he was the main guy for the parks. And so we've had this long intersecting relationship, and as I said, I've gotten to know him, and what Nuri said is absolutely true. He cares. In fact, he doesn't just, you know, he used to coach baseball, you know, not just the professional job working for Wreckin' Parks, you'd think that'd be enough, but then on his own time, he coached his kids, and then some of them grew up, and now he's still coaching. He coaches three teams in Reseda. Not one, not two, not, but three, with Frank Bush as well, and, I mean, it's amazing. So when you talk about the needs of Reseda Park, he's not just approaching as an AGM. He's seen the kids on the field. He knows what they need. He lives it and breathes it. And the good news, it's sad news that we're losing him. It really is heartbreaking. The good news is he's not going to stop coaching and being, you know, a park user and a park advocate, and I know if there's an issue with the park, well, you have a direct line to Mike, but you also, you'll let me and Nuri know right away. So we wish you just the very best. I really do hate to see you leave, but I'm thrilled that you're going to have a new chapter and do exciting things at home, and just, I wish you all the best. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I would also like to introduce Mike Scholl, the General Manager of Wreckin' Parks, to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll try not to get so emotional. The last time I spoke about Ramon leaving, but I would say this is like cutting off my right arm. Ramon was one of the, when I came to Wreckin' Parks initially from Public Works, Ramon was one of those, one of the very first people that welcomed me into the department, and for many, many years was actually my mentor, and taught me what was right and wrong about the things that we were doing inside of the park system. And I was fortunate enough to become General Manager, and it was not within 24 hours of me becoming General Manager, we had a vacancy, was appointed Ramon Barajas as the Assistant General Manager for the department. So somebody who came from a part-time employee, I mean, he's the, really the epitome of what you can do inside of the city and inside of such a good department as Wreckin' Parks. I don't know that I could say anything more about how much Ramon cares. I mean, it really, it really, his legacy is what he's done for so many years, the standards that he's put in place with the people that he's trained and leaving behind, the things that he's done will, it will continue to be, to go on for many, many years. And there's nobody, there's no city employee, I believe, that cares more about this city, cares more about the people and the kids of this city, and also cares about his employees, and always, always put everybody first. He's, you know, the most humble person you could ever meet, and just such a wonderful person, and, you know, we're thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight years. That's a long time, and we're just blessed to, the city has been blessed to have a person like Ramon for so long, and you will always, always be remembered, and Councilman Reseda Park will always be taken care of because he is coaching a lot of baseball there, and Ramon and I share in that passion, so I know we're going to stay in touch. Ramon is one of my best friends, and we're going to go see quite a few Dodger games together. We got some plans, but you'll always have a link. The Valley will always have that link to me, for sure, as long as I'm around, but we love you, Ramon. You know, the staff here behind you disrespects you. I thank you, City Council, for honoring such an incredible man today, and we're just grateful to do this for you today, Ramon.
Thank you. And with no further ado, I'd like to introduce Ramon Barajas.
Good morning. Good morning. I want to say thank you. I'm just going to go briefly, but I was born right in Royal Heights, and I moved to Van Nuys when I was six years old, and I started getting in trouble by the time I was thirteen, but luckily I found the city, or the city found me, and to tell you, excuse me, the city changed my life. It has provided for my family, for, you know, my kids, my wife. I was able to buy a house, and I wasn't, sorry about that, but, but, you know, I just want to say thank you to everybody. It's been a pleasure working with all the council offices. We've done a lot of projects out there. You know, I've had, you know, the last ten years, I've been, they went by so fast that, you know, at work that it's been, it's just been great. I had a great boss with Mike and everybody else, all the executive staff. I did have some challenges, and a lot of you send me flowers and send me cards when my son, Robert, passed away. But, you know, I want to thank my wife, but I just want to thank the city, the City of LA Recreation and Parks, for giving me an opportunity to work and to be able to provide for my family, and it's like, they're going to, the city's going to provide till the day I die because, so, thank you very much. You know, it's been, it's been, it's been an honor for somebody that, you know, like, that, you know, was raised by a single parent, my mom, who I remember, you know, we didn't have a lot of money. She was making like sixteen dollars a day in the 70s cleaning houses, and, you know, to be able to promote and have the opportunity, I just, you know, again, thank you, and, you know, and we'll see, I'll see you guys soon, or, you know, somewhere, especially at Reseda. Thank you.
This is why you're such a great guy, because you're one of us.
Ms. Martinez?
Anyways, Ramon, we have members on the queue, yes.
Yes, we have members on the queue, and it's a manual queue because it's not working right now, so I'll call the ones I have, and then I'll ask if anyone else wants to speak. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. President, and thank you very much to Ramon. I said this the other night at your event, and I'll say it again. I think if we had a poster child we wanted for the City of Los Angeles on what you can do in the life of public service, it would be Ramon. He's one of those guys that will work from the bottom to the top because he's a hard worker, he cared, he loved his job, and everybody that worked with him loved him, and you really are the poster child of what it's like to be a city employee, but I had the fortune of knowing you probably for thirty years when I worked for Hal Blonsen on up through my first two terms and now here again, and you were always the guy in Wreckin' Parks we'd go to because I knew we'd get things done. No matter what we asked, Ramon was the guy that said, let me look into it, let me see if I can do it, we'll figure out how to do it. When I got brought back to the council, I brought Mike Scholl into the office, and I had a little pet project I've been working on for the last eight years off the council called Oak Ridge Estates. It needed a lot of love and care, and I brought Ramon in and Mike in. I said, here's the things we need. We need these four things done. And Ramon said, I can do that, I can do that, I can do that, we can do that. Everything I asked, he said, we can do. And I looked at Mike, and Mike goes, Ramon, you're retiring in three months. How are you going to get that done? It's not possible. But he did it, and that's the kind of guy he was. He was a go-to guy, and in every department of the city, there may be one or two go-to guys you can go to. Some departments have nobody you can go to to get something done, but Ramon was the person in Wreckin' Parks for the past thirty-something years that if you wanted something done in Wreckin' Parks, you went to Ramon because it would get done. So God bless you. Thank you. Enjoy your retirement, and for you only, go Dodgers.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Thank you, Nuri, for bringing Ramon, and, you know, Ramon is a legend. I mean, at your retirement party, I think we had quorum almost, and I just want to thank you for all your work. I mean, as a New York Councilmember, I didn't get to work with you as closely, but even in the short time that we did, you did a couple of projects, and I actually want you to stay so you could finish some more projects, but I get it, you have a family, you have other things to do, and you did give so much of your life to the City of Los Angeles. Thank you for all your sacrifice and all your dedication. The city is great because of individuals like yourself, and, you know, and as it was in your retirement dinner, I mean, the amount of connections that you built and the amount of people that you knew, that's the reason why you got stuff done, because you know how to work with people. So thank you so much for everything that you've done for our city and for everything else, and all the Angelenos. So thank you so very much.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bob and Nuri, I hate to break it to you, but Ramon belongs to the whole City of Los Angeles, not just the San Fernando Valley, and we're all going to miss him. I think you radiate character, humility, and professionalism, and if there's anyone that was always just laser-focused on the job at hand and just getting things done for thirty-seven years, as Mr. Smith said, you are the example. I think you're the epitome of what a city employee should be, and I think, you may not realize it, but you're a model for all of us. Whether it has been a recreation resource, or a skate park, or a children's play area, or a dog park, you bring the same level of professionalism and passion to creating a successful project every single time, and that'll be your legacy. And I'm very unhappy that you're retiring for us, but I'm very, very happy for you and your family because you deserve it. And I don't make it to Reseda too often, but I would certainly go to Reseda Park just to say hello to you. So congratulations, and thank you for your service to the city. I think it just goes without saying that the city, family, really loves you and appreciates deeply the legacy that you've left for all of us.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone raising their hands, so I'll assume there's no one else on the queue. I do want to just add that everybody loves you. We're all going to miss you. Your work in the city was an amazing story, and I particularly appreciate your help with the lawn bowling facility in the Little Homeby area, and whether or not you're retired, we still have a rematch that we have planned, so I look forward to bowling against you sometime in the near future.
That's a challenge.
Indeed. We were both pretty good.
I want to come see.
You should. You should join us.
All right. Corretts versus Ramon.
We all thank you. We all love you, and we wish you the best in the rest of your life at beyond City Hall.
Thank you, Paul. And on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and the City Council, we'd like to commend and recognize Ramon Barajas, Assistant General Manager of Wreckin' Parks for your thirty-seven years of dedicated service. Thank you very much. With your wife? And then Mike? Why don't we do it? Thank you. It's great. Thanks, Bob.
Please collect all your belongings.
Follow the council members to the back for some additional photos.
Collect all your bags.
I'd come to say hi to you, too, by the way.
I appreciate it.
Congrats, Ramon.
We got Mike's backup, so.
That's right.
How am I ever going to receive that?
Yeah, thanks.
Good. That was a good one.
Look, everybody.
Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscano, Sadio, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Corretts, Corquain, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, and Wesson, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Martinez moves. Councilmember Smith seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember O'Farrell moves. Councilmember Bonin seconds. Next?
Mr. President, there is a request from a member to refer Item 3 back to the Housing Committee. Further, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that Items 1B, D through H, J, and K be continued to July 2nd.
Without objection, that will be the order.
Very good, sir. Item 1 is an item noticed for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety recommends that Items 1A, C, and I be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid in full.
Very good. Mr. Clerk, do we have cards?
Mr. President, we do have cards on that matter. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
Yes, we'll call those special for cards.
Very good, sir. Items 2 through 8 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members, any specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Next?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, Items 9 and 10 are items noticed for public hearing.
Members, any specials?
Mr. President, we do have cards on both items.
And we'll continue Item 10 for thirty days.
Very good, sir.
And you said we have cards on Item 9?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll call those special for cards. Members, other specials? If not, let's close the public hearing, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Mr. President, pardon me. Inasmuch as there's cards, we should hold...
In the beginning, it was just me and my mom. And she used to work two jobs. She used to make sure I went to school.
I had a lot of problems at home, you know. I, I knew people were looking at me like, "You're a high school dropout and you sleep in your car." So, that was really hard.
I was born in Mexico. I came over here when I was eight years old.
McDonald's, it teaches you a lot of people skills. Overall, it just helps you grow as a person.
After you go through all the training, they teach you the skills that you need to learn, you become very proficient.
You know, when I finally graduated, I was like, "Now I can go to college." I just dreamed of a bigger future for myself. All of that did start with the online high school diploma. It's crazy.
When I walked across the stage and I grabbed my degree, it was super emotional because, "Look, I'm here, thanks to McDonald's."
You know, I came from nothing, you know, and to now being a GM and, you know, having my college degree. I was given all that help and, you know, sometimes people, that's all they need.
I feel really hopeful about my future. I feel like I can really achieve anything.
Good morning, colleagues. I, I hope you had a chance to grab a McDonald's breakfast in the rotunda. I am joined today by McDonald's owner-operators from throughout Los Angeles to recognize them for their contributions to our city. As Chair of the Economic Development Committee, it's important that we highlight the positive impact that companies like McDonald's are having on the lives of real people. And I applaud their efforts to effect positive changes across the communities by creating jobs and recycling issues. I'm happy to showcase all the good this company is doing and how they're shifting the way they do business. California was McDonald's first home, and the city of L.A. is home to over one hundred McDonald franchise restaurants, at least one in every council district. McDonald's feeds twenty-five million customers a day in the U.S., and it would take thirteen days to feed the entire population. McDonald's is on a journey to provide their customers with more delicious, sustainable, and quality and healthier food options. For example, McDonald's classic burgers have no artificial preservatives, no artificial flavors, and no added colors from artificial sources. By 2020, McDonald's will source a portion of their beef in the top ten beef sourcing countries from suppliers participating in sustainability programs. McDonald's has committed to sourcing one-hundred percent cage-free eggs by 2025 in the U.S. and Canada. Aside from transforming its food, McDonald's has been on a journey to use its scale for good. McDonald's is taking action to address climate change. Striving for a more sustainable future in L.A. is a priority for the city council, which is why we've been taking some aggressive action now and setting lofty goals. Last year, McDonald's was the first restaurant company in the world to set a science-based target to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in their restaurants, in their offices and in the supply chain. By 2025, one-hundred percent of McDonald's guest packaging will come from renewable, recycled, or certified sources and will offer recycling in its restaurants. We share a common goal: to improve the quality of life in Los Angeles, such as individuals like Nicole Inaroo, who is an owner-operator from the New Ninth. After working for more than a decade in the social service arena, Nicole decided to switch gears and join the family business. Her mother was a McDonald's franchisee who owned eight locations, and Nicole soon became the owner-operator of three locations. Together with her mother and sister, the family now owns and operates eighteen restaurants throughout Southern California, including some in the Ninth District. Nicole and her family are dedicated to supporting and improving the lives of the people who work and live in the communities where they do business. She was the first African-American free male to serve as chairperson of the Southern California Regional Leadership Council, which represented over eight, which represents over eight hundred restaurants. And I am proud to have her stand by me today. Without further ado, let me introduce Nicole Inaroo.
Nicole?
Thank you. Thank you so much to the city council president and also, thank you so much to councilmember Price. Yes, I am here actually representing all of the owner-operators. I have a lot with me here today and also some of our wonderful employee, employees. And it's a great pleasure for us to be able to do business in the city of Los Angeles. We have a history in Los Angeles of being one of the oldest regions. We started here McDonald's. There are many second-generation owner-operators, such as myself, my sister, some other people we have here, whose parents and some grandparents started in McDonald's and now continue that legacy of having the priority of giving back to our communities. We offer, based on the, the requests from our consumers, we offer a variety of flexible menu items and choices. And we really focus on hiring from within our community. We support local schools, churches, and community groups, and Ronald McDonald House Children's Charities. We pride ourselves at McDonald's on being America's first best job. We really give an opportunity for people to work in our restaurants, to be able to learn those important life skills, and utilize those to either decide to stay with us and grow within our organization, go on to do other things, or even become owner-operators. We have many owner-operators who started off as crew people, working in the restaurants, and now own restaurants themselves. We really have a focus on supporting and encouraging education with our employees. We provide flexible schedules. We have a signature program that you saw the commercial about our choice of opportunity, where we, any employee who's worked at any McDonald's for more than ninety days is eligible to get twenty-five hundred dollars in tuition assistance. We also provide English as second, second language classes. And also, we have now extended our high school program and college advisory services to family members of employees, not just employees. We have over five hundred participants in the Los Angeles area, and since 2015, have awarded over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in assistance. Additionally, we offer scholarships to, for students going to HBCUs through our Thurgood Marshall Program, and also offer scholarships through our Hacer Program. We are very proud to be, to have participated and supported former First Lady Michelle Obama's Reach Higher Program. Wednesday was the National Signing Day, so it was a great opportunity for us to demonstrate how important education is to us at McDonald's. We recently unveiled a campaign called Black and Positively Golden, which focuses on showing the positive things that are going on in the African-American community, and really focusing on education, empowerment, and entrepreneurship. So, we have a lot of great, exciting things going on in our restaurants. We're very proud to work in the community. We look forward to continuing to work with the city and the community, and we welcome all of you to come into our restaurants, take a tour. I know councilmember Price has been to my restaurant and toured through it, so we can demonstrate all the things that we're doing. So, I really appreciate the opportunity, and on behalf of all the owner-operators here and our employees, we really say thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. We appreciate your, your leadership, your involvement, not only as a business person, but as a community person, you and your family. Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Carr, and Price, we have members on the queue.
Okay.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you, Mr. Price, for bringing this presentation this morning. I just wanted to acknowledge that your presenter today is a McDonald's franchisee in the Eighth Council District. And she has one of the busiest, cleanest, friendliest McDonald's anywhere. And I really appreciate your presentation about everything that's being done in the community. I was just discussing with Councilman Bonin, we're, we're both past the age where we can do a lot of eating at McDonald's, but we feel the things that you all do in the community, especially the Black and Golden that we had in the Crenshaw District a couple of weeks ago. So, again, thank you, thank you, thank you. And anything we can do to help forward your cause, we're here for you. So, thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Price.
Uh, Mr. O'Farrell? Followed by Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. Price, for bringing all these wonderful people in to, to talk about the other side of McDonald's that people need to better understand. And I just want to say a few, a few things about my relationship and my working relationship with McDonald's Corporation and the franchisees, and that is, going back to the minimum wage discussion in 2014, I wanted to hear directly from businesses that would be impacted by this very complex issue, that we had, we felt a very strong desire to lead in a minimum wage increase that would strike the right balance. And so, who would that impact the most? Restaurants. So, I called a series of meetings and met early and often with our small restaurant operators. And fast forward a few years, when I introduced the straws-upon-request motion, I knew that in Los Angeles, we did not want to exempt any food establishment or beverage establishment from the straws-upon-request law that the state has exempted from. And so, who did I call and invite to the table again? McDonald's. And we had weeks, if not months, of discussions about what that could look like and how I conveyed to McDonald's how what a wonderful opportunity this could be for the nation's largest fast food operator to pioneer and innovate a way that we could do this with the economy of scale that you have and all that. And then, as you know, Ms. Martinez, when we did the press conference, the steps of City Hall, there was Mr. Chang right with us. And then when we adopted it, and on Earth Day, when it went into effect, the straws-upon-request-only ordinance for the city of Los Angeles, there was Mr. Chang supporting this. And it wasn't just twisting you and intimidating you, but we worked together to help make this happen. And I think that that's the way. We don't need to be in the business of picking winners and losers when we engage in proactive, forward-thinking policy on the environment, or business, or the economy. I, I love that we can work with all of you to collaborate on a way to move our signature initiatives forward. And that's, that's how I feel about McDonald's and my relationship with you, and I, I deeply appreciate that partnership. And I just got to say that Ronald McDonald House is in my district, and I know that there's a very close relationship with McDonald's Corporation and Ronald McDonald House Charities. And what you do for the children and families at Children's Hospital should be talked about a lot more, because I can't say enough good things about that wonderful, wonderful organization and what it does for the families that I represent in my district. So, I, I love what you do, I commend you and congratulate you. And again, Mr. Price, I'm so glad that you were able to pull this together and highlight the great works that these owners, operators, and employees of city workers, how they help uplift our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Rue?
Chair, I wanted to just rise also to recognize McDonald's for all of the great work that you guys do. But I'm a little upset because I forget, I didn't get the memo this morning about the McDonald's breakfast, so I missed it. But I'll make up for it later. But, you know, everything that was highlighted, I just want to say, not just the big stuff like the Ronald McDonald House, which is, by the way, is not just in the, locally in the United States, but it's also global. But just the little things that you guys do, like hosting LAPD officers to meet with the community and providing cookies and donuts, I mean, cookies and coffee. Opening up and providing food for local homeowner groups or, or neighbor councils to come in and use a space or actually provide food for various events. All those little things help, all those little things are very neighborly, so I really want to applaud you and, and congratulate you on that, even all the things that you weren't able to mention. And also want to recognize, and I know Councilman O'Farrell already did, but T. Chang, a good friend from a long time ago and former past chair, who's always involved in, and, and you would think, "How are you operating your business when you're doing all this other stuff?" But thank you for everything that you've done, and thank you for all the great community works that McDonald's does. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Price. That concludes members on the queue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, members.
And, Madam President, if I may, a quick announcement in regards to the continuation date for item number ten. I spoke in error, it is not June 4, but June 5.
We're continuing that item to June 5?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on, let's move on to multiple cards. Armando Herman? Sir, I don't need you to scream from the back of the, the chamber, so you need to wait your turn. I've not called your name yet. Armando Herman, are you here?
Coming, coming.
You're speaking on item number one, nine, and general public comment.
Fellow Americans, have you not heard? Now, they continue to process this, this fascist idea about liens. And these liens are unconstitutional for two reasons. One, they do not send certified mail to the occupant-owner of the property. Two is, they charge you this ridiculous three-hundred percent to, to hold you hostage to extort monies. They'll make you keep coming two or three times, spending twenty dollars for parking, sitting here, staying here all day for two and a half hours, agitating my stress, agitating my anxiety. And I'm saying to you folks, stop harassing and retaliation on these liens. For example, take into consideration item J in CD-14, 330 North, mental court, a four-thousand-dollar lien. And that's because Jose Weezer is under an FBI investigation. Also, on item number, item nine, which is old business, that's another issue. Item nine A, special, in retaliation by the city attorney. But that's something else someone else will speak about. So, at 5514 West Ventura Boulevard, when I was up in Pasadena, I mentioned that Herb Wesson's son is using his mailing address.
You need to get back on the item that you actually signed up for.
Okay, ma'am. Then also on CD-8, CD-8, 1852 West Vermont, extortion of two thousand dollars on item H, CD-8, 1552 West, 59th Place, another four thousand, three, eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars and change. This is criminal activity of extortion and crime.
Give him his one minute of general public.
So, FBI, what are you doing about Mr. Weezer? I called for the record, Washington, and asked Roy Ball Allard, "Why aren't we allowing the wetbacks to come across the border to our sanctuary cities?" I want sanctuary cities open to all border brothers. Bring all the wetbacks by busloads to California, Los Angeles, and San Francisco, Mr. Trump. We want more measles. We want a crisis that is uncontrollable like today with the honor and dishonor of veterans, homeless people, and the American citizens who are on our streets. For example, take into consideration item J in CD 14, 330 North, mental court, a $4,000 lien. And that's because Jose Weezer is under an FBI investigation. Also, on item number, item 9, which is old business, that's another issue, item 9A special in retaliation by the city attorney. But that's something else someone else will speak about. So at 5514 West Ventura Boulevard, when I was up in Pasadena, I mentioned that Herb Weston's son is using his mailing address-
You need to get back on the item that you actually signed up for.
Okay, ma'am. Then also on CD 8, 1852 West Vermont, extortion of $2,000 on item H, CD 8, 1552 West, 59th Place, another $4,3860 and change. This is criminal activity of extortion and crime.
Give him his one minute of general public-
So FBI, what are you doing about Mr. Weezer? I called for the record, Washington, and asked Roy Ball Allard, why aren't we allowing the wetbacks to come across the border to our sanctuary cities? I want sanctuary cities open to all border brothers. Bring all the wetbacks by busloads to California, Los Angeles, and San Francisco, Mr. Trump. We want more measles. We want a crisis that is uncontrollable like today with the honor and dishonor of veterans, homeless people, and the American citizens who are on our streets. For this reason, 42 USC, 1983, fuck the city attorney, fuck the DA, and fuck the Attorney General, House Eric Bessera, who's now questioning the Catholic Church. Fuck the church, fuck you Catholics, and fuck Jose Weezer.
Your time is up. Next speaker is Wayne Spindler. You're speaking on items 1, 9, and general public comment.
Good morning, niggers! And Greg Smith. So, what we got here-
Sir, sir-
There been goddamn problems here.
Get back on the item, or I'm going to have you move to council chambers.
I was interrupted. May I have my time back, please?
Sir, sir-
Must I have-
You're not, sir, you're not helping the situation here.
How did?
Get back on the item.
Can I have my time back? You keep taking my time. So we got ourselves here, these blood-sucking motherfuckers, for example, on one J, a Jose Weezer lien, the FBI lien. Wave a lien, fool, he ain't gonna help your ass. And I'm asking Greg Smith, the only human being left that I can identify in the council, for God's sakes, waive these fucking liens. And then we get this fucking shit on number 9, Nury, you fucking cunt, on 9. North Morella Avenue lien, they're back again. You did not waive the lien. They are back again. Why? Because you're too busy screaming, you're too busy complaining about city business. 7644 North Morella, city attorney, were you trying to email and blackmail people not to show up today on the continued item?
Yes, Mr. Spindler's correct.
All right. So therefore, we got business here. The business, waive the goddamn fucking lien, Nury, because this is the reason why your husband wants to slap you across the face when you come home. Because you're doing a stinking, lousy fucking job. And you've been bringing the FBI to this building, too. So that's the reason why the city don't work.
Don't worry about my husband, sir. Get back on the item.
He mad about it. I mad about it. Waive the lien on number 9.
Your one minute of general public comment.
Touching presentation yesterday on postpartum depression, and how you blame your poor little baby, Nury, on all of your health problems, you hate your child, and that's why you never spend time with her. You got all that money-
Mr. Spindler-
All that money. Hundreds of thousands of dollars saved up, and you can't be a stay-at-home mom to raise your daughter in the proper way.
Mr. Spindler, would you address something within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, please?
The fact that this woman is incapable emotionally of being the council president, as she stated yesterday, Wednesday. You want to talk about emotional stress? How about when I wake up at night, and I remember the gun pointed at my head in March 30th, 2017? How do you think I feel, bitch? This is your government, bitch. This is your government, Fable. Fuck you, fuck the police, and fuck this city council.
Have a great day, Mr. Spindler. Our next speaker is Eric Preben, are you here? You're going to help enlighten our day today. You're speaking on items number 1 and 9, and general public comment.
Thank you, it's Eric Preben. I think you need to reconsider 9, because you already voted on it, but whatever. I just want to reference that when the LAPD provides guidance about whether or not a liquor license is supposed to go, the public needs to see it. Now, this is two times you've continued it.
So, Mr. Preben, we actually continued that item. Would you please just speak to items number 1 and 9, please?
Continue an item?
Don't worry about that, sir. We announced that we continue to get back on the items that you signed up for.
Again, I am speaking on the items. Item number 1, let's just go to the liens where you're comfortable, okay? Marquis Harris Dawson is doing a robust job, okay? He's got not just the highest lien, which is over, I think it's almost 5,000, 4,800, but he's also got another one at 4,000, and another one in the 3,000, and Mr. Weezer is in a sloppy second with just under 4. But you've really tuned this stuff up, and it's great, because it's during a homeless crisis, so you can all feel the energy of that, about your incredible, I don't want to call it hypocrisy, but I think that's a good word, you know, of going around with this building and safety stuff during a time, going around, Bonin is going around, I'm going to show you the data, the number of parking restrictions that have been pushed out over the last year, while we're all talking about how we have to do safe parking, it's just an absolute shame. And by the way, it was nice to see Corretts gobbling up a little snack while running the meeting.
Why don't we get back on the items, Mr. Preben?
Okay, no, no, I'm trying to be on them. Look, item 7 and 8, I can't talk about because you put them in the ckey section, and Greg Smith has them set out of the room.
So, again, you're not on item 1 or 9?
Yeah, but they're both recycling related. No, 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 I am. I'm on 9. I'm on 9 now, 9, okay?
Mr. Preben, you're not going to get back on the items? I'm going to have you speak on general public comment.
Yeah, it's very difficult, because there were no agendas in the hall today, and I know that's a big problem.
Okay, I think we should just send him to general public comment, since he's been worn multiple times.
Give him his one minute. One minute of your general public comment, start it now.
Well, general public comment is that when you have a special meeting, you give 24-hour notice, and folks are allowed to speak on all the items on the agenda. It is a subversion of the special meeting law to pretend that 38 departments, who will all give budget memos that will be assigned a number, is a one-item agenda. I know that you've been doing it for years, AVAC gets a lot of credit, all the folks who came up with a way to disenfranchise the public have done a great job, and you're doing a pretty good job of showing the meetings. But by pretending that the whole public gets one minute on the budget is silly, and you should allow folks to comment on the items. Bloomingfield, Bonin, I believe Corretts and Krikorian sit here and ask good questions. The public is allowed to react after that happens. But you don't make that possible, because Krikorian is in a blinding rush to be a hero somehow, to get out a little earlier this year. Like, the goal is to get all this stuff approved behind the public's back, well, before they notice. Not cool, totally inappropriate, and, Mr. Fable, so you know, a violation of the Brown Act.
Okay, next speaker, is there a Mr. Flannery here? You want to come forward? Your last name is Lenzford?
Yes, it is.
You're speaking on items 1 and general public comment.
It's, yeah, just a general public comment.
Okay, just give him his minute. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you. It's such an honor to be here and speak here at this, in the chambers here, especially after seeing the 50th anniversary of the homicide division, as well as the McDonald's, you know, recognition. I think it really is wonderful to see things accomplished in the city, and as well as the parks and recreation, too, with all that hard work. However, I'm just making a general comment in terms of public safety, as we can see here, some of the public is getting a little bit worked up. And it concerns the issue of a, something that adds to your distress, subtracts from your happiness, divides your attention, and multiplies like crazy. And what I'm talking about is the acute infestation-
Your time is up, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, have a good weekend. Sir, we only have a one minute for general public comment, and your minute is up. I need you to sit down. Thank you. The next speaker is Patricia McAllister. And you're speaking on items number 1, item 1, and general public comment.
Good morning, Madam Pro Tem. Item number 1, I'm still concerned about the liens that we have on the houses. Now, what I'm really concerned about, and you guys have done nothing about it, is the 250 percent penalty fee. So I see one homeowner being charged $3,852 just for penalty fees. Now, that doesn't include the actual amount of the fine for whatever violation this person had. Now, I've been reading the budget, and I'll be here at 1 o'clock for people who tune in, tune into this council meeting, the budget meeting at 1:00 in this chamber, if they televise it. But per the budget, for the past five years, the city has seen a decline in the sale of housing. So all of these houses that you're foreclosing on, they're just sitting there, they're not being sold. People are not buying anything. Why? Because of the economy and what you guys are doing with the money, okay? These illegal aliens selling those hot dogs and fruit on the street, they can't afford to buy these houses. So you need to stop foreclosing and stop these liens. Now, again, I'd like to remind-
Your general public comment now, ma'am.
Again, I'd like to remind the teachers, turn my mic on, please. I'd like to remind the teachers to call 1-800-540-6369 and request a participant input history report from PARS. PARS is the Public Agency Retirement Services. This is not a teacher-retirement system, but LAUSD is funneling, secretly funneling, teacher-retirement money into PARS, and then they wipe out the account, okay? Call CalSTRS and get your report, DB Contribution Line Report. CalSTRS, the California State Teacher Retirement System, has all the money you ever put in there. Call 800-228-5453, okay? Now, I've been working on this case, and I'm working with the city, and as a matter of fact, I'm the plaintiff and they're the defendant, and they think I'm so silly, they're violating CCP 439A2, penalty on conferring. So we're working on this in court. This is not just me talking, I'm now acting as pro per. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Arnold Sachs. So, Mr. Sachs, you're going to speak on items number 1 and general public comment.
No, ma'am, I'm going to actually speak more.
No, you're not. Those are the two items you signed up for.
Item notice for public hearing, as the gentlemen who were talking earlier are allocated extra time.
So, Mr. Sachs, you're on item 1 right now.
Item notice for public hearing, sir. It says it in your agenda, item notice for public hearing. You had an item notice for public hearing at Metro Headquarters on Thursday.
So, all right, you're off topic. So, Madam President, he's refusing to get on topic. I suggest we send him to general public comment.
Mr. Sachs, you're either going to get off topic, or I'm going to have you sit down. Sir, you need to get back on topic?
Discourse for public hearing, are you criminalizing me? Then read me my goddamn Miranda rights. If you're not going to read me my goddamn Miranda rights, then don't criminalize public discourse.
So, Mr. Sachs, you've been ordered to go sit back down. Please sit down, Mr. Sachs. He's obviously disrupting the meeting at this point, I suggest we ask him to leave.
Mr. Sachs, you're being asked to be removed from this meeting, you continue to disrupt this council. Please, sergeants, can you please have Mr. Sachs removed from our council chambers? Thank you.
Mr. Sachs, you disrupted the meeting, you were asked to leave, you aren't, you've now been asked, you've been removed. Please quietly leave.
Public hearing.
You are disrupting the meeting, please leave quietly. You've been ordered removed.
Order was raised.
Okay, he's shouting all the way out, disrupting our meeting, and he's continuing to disrupt it. Mr. Sachs, I recommend you go.
Councilor, pass the heat.
And he's, so I'm sorry, Madam President, but we can't continue business with Mr. Sachs shouting from the back of the room.
All right, I'm going to call the next speaker. The next speaker is Jose Estrada. You've signed up to speak on items 9, 9A, and general public comment.
Hand out some paperwork, so that we can put it on file, please.
Sure, I'm going to have, hold on.
Can you stop the time?
Ask the sergeant to go ahead and, go ahead.
So, I'm Jose Estrada, the owner of the property that has a lien that was here twice, well, second time here, wasting my time, taking time off work, not knowing why a lien was imposed on my property when there was fire damage to the property, which you can see the date of the occurrence was March 2nd, and Building and Safety imposed a fine on my property on April 22nd. If the city, if the inspector went to the property on April 20th and saw that it was a vacant home, unlivable condition, why am I here standing trying to fight this lien? You know, this is a waste of time. I've tried to resolve it. If you could see on page 5, I got an email from them at 7:00 this morning, responding that they still wanted to proceed. Never in 45 days did I hear anything from them, and that was the same way.
Your minute is up, so if you want to go ahead and talk during your general public comment, or did you want to waive that?
Yes. You know, this is very embarrassing, you know, Building and Safety, the way they handle this, saying you've been notified, you've been notified. This is the only certified letter I received from them, okay? It's a vacant home. Nobody's going to receive any mail on a vacant home when there are homeless people walking by, taking things of little postings that they put. I can't control that. I can't control calling out, calling them several times on this matter and never getting a call back from any supervisor. Five people, I went into the department and never heard a call back. Up until today, they want to speak, I don't know, but I want this lien off my property.
Say something? Let me see the video. Thank you very much.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call the next speakers. We're going to go ahead and move on to general public comment, members. Mike Greenspan, are you here? Is Major Dodson here? You're next, sir. You have one minute for general public comment.
Mike Greenspan, a brewing butt-kicking Florida Gator, it's great to be back after the council recess. We've both got a respite from each other. With this holiday, there's a good chance for reflection upon ourselves, as well as our relationship with others. We are a city of many different ethnicities, races, religious faiths, political views, and of various levels of social economics. Hopefully, with all of our differences, there can be a spirit of mutual respect and toleration for each other. At this time of the year, the Christians celebrate Jesus dying on the cross and resurrecting three days later. In the Christian world, we celebrate Easter Sunday with an Easter egg hunt, the Easter bunny, and eating ham and yams. That's funny, bunnies don't lay eggs, and Jesus never went on an Easter egg hunt nor ate ham. He will return as King of Kings. In Judaism, we have Mitch Englander. He is here with-
So, I'm not sure this is in the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Could you connect it up with city business, please, somehow?
Back, kike, Englander, back, kike, Englander.
Very well, thank you. Major Dodson, are you here? You want to come forward? You've got your one minute of general public comment, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Technology, I'll refer to technology as smart. Technology interface to attain goods, and goods and services is referred to as smart. Smart ads help Los Angeles earn in a smart city on multiple platforms, supplementing our income, affording us the opportunity to focus on building small businesses and spending valuable time with our families. We ask the city council not to pass legislation hindering the ability to earn additional income using smart advertising. Ride-share platforms and smart delivery platforms need this. We don't want to lose this additional income and the benefits from it, those of us using these platforms. Los Angeles has led the world in new ideas. This is the future, and LA welcomes the future. Please don't put any bans on smart ads and smart advertising. Thank you, city council.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Luisa Estrada, followed by Jose Duena. Is Jose Duena here?
Hi, my name is Luisa Estrada. And I'm the father of Jose Estrada, who's facing a lien these days. I'm a general contractor. When I came to the United States, I didn't know how to speak English. I went to school, I raised my kids, I started earning $1 and $25 an hour, and here I am today, trying to speak with the city attorney. Like I said, I'm a general contractor, doing business with the city for almost 30 years. I recommend my son to try to speak with the city council of our neighborhood, which is Mrs. Nury. We never heard anything back from them. We're here again. Yesterday, we had a phone call, my son told me that someone from the member, from the, from the Council District 6 offered my son to pay $600 and be done with the lien, and I told my son, I don't like that proposition. Why? Because I don't think it's legal and it's fair.
Sir, for the record, my staff did communicate with you back and forth, and I'm going to take care of the lien today. So I'm going to take care of it, but please do not misrepresent our office, because we did communicate with your son. Thank you very much. Our next speaker. Our next speaker, and the matter will be taken care of today, by the way. You're welcome. Go ahead. What is your name, sir?
Jose Duena.
Welcome.
Good morning. I'm here to represent, my company is the advertisement, Firefly, working hard every day, and then I see you want to take out the advertisement. Please, I need to say, stop harassment, because that's the income extra in my family for buy food, buy gas, and support my family. That's the only I want to say. Thank you, Mr. Ferro, you're my counsel, I need you, I know your support. Otherwise, thank you. Have a good day, I'm sorry for the comment over here. Thank you.
No, it's okay, that's part of the job sometimes, it comes with the job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being so polite. Thank you very much, good to see you here. Okay, Mr. Clerk, that concludes general public comment, let's move on to this vote on the remaining balance for item number one.
And, Madam President, the remaining balance are items A, C, and I, and there's a recommendation from the department on those items to receive and file them in as much as the liens have been paid in full.
Very well, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay, let's move on to item number nine A. Go ahead, Mr. City Clerk, get an announcement on that item.
And, Madam President, there has been a request to receive and file that matter.
Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Thank you.
Madam President, that brings us to the special meeting, would you like to recess the regular and go into the special?
Yes, let's go ahead and do so.
Very good. Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscino, Sedia, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, and Wesson, 10 members present in a quorum. Madam President, that brings us to item 11, it's an item for which a public hearing has not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have a number of speakers on this item, so Patricia McAllister, are you still here?
Yes.
Speaking of item number one, I'm sorry, 11 on our special item, special meeting item.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Item number 11, the city wants $40 million to fix up a building, to fix up a building, and to, they say buy the building. That's too much money. Now, from what I've seen from the HHH properties, I've seen the breakdown, $100,000 to fix up one unit. Now, the building is already standing, okay? $100,000, so that's where everything's being padded, is being padded on what you're spending to do certain things, that's where I see the corruption. It doesn't take $100,000 to fix up a unit that's still sitting there. All you're going to do is put some walls up, make sure the plumbing is working, and things of that nature, put the refrigerator in and all of that, that's not $100,000. Now, I've been going around to different, different departments here in City Hall because I want to find out how the Budget Committee is approving this. See, it's coming out of the departments first, and then the Budget Committee. We have to hold the Budget Committee accountable, because they claim that they're not responsible, but I think we can get some crime charges.
Next speaker is Armando Herman, followed by Mr. Flannery, are you still here?
Yes, sir.
Item 11.
Fellow citizens of America, under Responsibility Act of 1982, known as TEFFRA, why are we holding a meeting without public entertainment? Why can't the public weigh in on this matter of a special held on a Friday at the last minute? I'm demanding that this motion be held for the accountability that the public will be heard and speak on. You discriminate against race, especially against African Americans, against Hispanics, and against the minority population like myself, who find this disgraceful unaccountability to allow transparency. And I demand that 128 multifamily rental housing fall under the federal USC to investigate criminal crime, criminal activity, and the FBI pursue why these white fucking politicians like that fucking fool up there, you fucking asshole, are doing the wrong to the people.
The next speaker is Flannery Langford, are you still here?
Yes, I'm here.
Followed by Mr. Previn and Wayne Spindler. Item 11, sir.
Okay, yes, just very, very quickly, I'd like to mention again how stressed out the public is in, and the situation that is growing, we have a number of people that are, that are getting confused and acting out because of.
That has nothing to do with the item you signed up for, it's item 11.
Absolutely it does, absolutely it does, in terms of the fact that because everyone in this area is affected. You have potential for a whole huge community of people, even though I've referred to public health six months ago on this issue, if you just go on.
You really need to get back on the TEFFRA hearing item.
Absolutely, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware, if they have any issues, if they, they should check out their public health website, that's all. Thank you so much, thank you so much.
Mr. Previn, you want to come on up? Item 11.
Yeah, Eric Previn from Studio City, and, you know, the TEFFRA hearing is where the city is essentially approving the go-ahead on $40 million worth of bonds for 128 units in Monica Rodriguez's district, their multifamily rental housing. But the thing that bumps me is that they're going to enter into an ADA agreement and, you know, to affirm that the project will comply with the American Disabilities Act, 42 U.S.C., Section 12, 101, and you guys play this game where there's no real hearings, you don't, as Mr. Sachs was frogmarched out for talking about a public hearing, you seem to disregard the purpose of a public hearing, and your practice, which is your current practice of mushing together TEFFRA hearings, like this TEFFRA hearing, continue to interrupt me, and you'll be frogmarched.
You're off topic, Mr. Herman, or Mr. Previn.
Again, really don't litigate people while they're talking for a minute, it makes you look like an idiot, and it hurts us.
Okay, you're off topic, Mr. Previn.
Disagree, you've interrupted me, I'm going to give you right back what you give me.
Sergeant, can you please have Mr. Previn to sit down? He's not, he continues not to be on the item of item 11, he understands the rules, he continues to not follow the rules. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker is Wayne Spindler.
Yes, sir. So that fat cunt, greasy little bitch, Monica Rodriguez, turned a slide past that $40 million of grease up her ass, yes, sir. To do what? Go to Fillmore, Fillmore Street is the equivalent of the ghetto of the valley, a fucking armpit. So you're going 128 units of goddamn unsuitable housing, Greg Smith wouldn't house one of his chihuahuas in one of those ugly units, no, sir. It's beneath us niggas to talk about this here on a Friday, we should be talking about positivity and not the negativity of the TEFFRA. No, sir, the FBI, fool, that's why we put these up, investigate this item, won't you, Bob, and FBI, please arrest Monica Rodriguez.
So, let's get back on topic, Mr. Spindler.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler, you're done. Can you ask him to take a seat, please? Caitlin Flint, are you here? Sorry, Caitlin Flint. Mr. Arnold Sachs, you're back for this item? Item 11. The special meeting, so you know the rules. You guys stick to the item.
Yes, 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 yes. So, the special meeting is about hearing, you know, by the way, there is no notice of your special meeting in your, in your agenda packet, and that's a violation of disability rights, ADA rights.
Sachs, you need to get on item.
I am explaining, Madam Chair, please clean the shit out of your ears.
There's nothing wrong with.
You are violating ADA rights by not including a written report of item number 11 in your agenda.
Mr. Sachs, please speak to the TEFFRA item.
Attorney, please, I know you went to law school, but going to Joe, Bazooka Joe.
Can you hold Mr. Arnold Sachs aside?
Bazooka Joe Law School.
Wayne Spindler, if you get out of your chair one more time, I'm going to have you removed from the, from the council chambers.
Allow people who have some idea what they're talking about to get engaged in public discourse, not free speech, there's a big difference between the two.
Okay, you're still off topic, Mr. Sachs.
And if you were any kind of attorney, you would know the difference. I understand, Mr. Bullwinkle says.
Don't pick a clock and ask him to take a seat, he's keep disrupting the meeting.
At least he's trying to do something!
Thank you very much, Mr. Arnold Sachs. So that concludes speakers on this item. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Mr. Sachs, please don't disrupt from the audience.
Special meeting, if you're going to do it.
Let's forthwith.
Madam President, would you like to send that matter forthwith?
Yes, I do.
Very good.
Without objection, that would be the order, which be forced.
Do you wish to adjourn the special and return to the regular?
Let's go ahead and do that, and which be for us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and referred members, are there any announcements? Saying none, can we all please, oh, Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Tomorrow afternoon on, at Crenshaw Boulevard in the brand-new, exciting Obama Boulevard in the city of Los Angeles, we'll be having a great celebration tomorrow to celebrate the renaming of that street, sponsored by our own council president, Wesson, there'll be music, there'll be food, there'll be fun and games for everybody, but mostly a celebration of the city that the President of the United States lived in and matriculated in for a few years, and the place, the location that he had his first rally for his campaign for presidency here in the city of Los Angeles, there, on the new Obama Boulevard tomorrow afternoon in South Los Angeles, so.
Can you remind us again about the time, what time are the facilities getting started?
So the facilities will start at noon, and will go until about 6:00 in the evening, and there'll be stuff for the whole family there.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, Mr. Blumenfield?
Give the presentation to the Walk of Hearts, to Joe and Katie, well, if you want to see it in person, this Sunday, 10:00 to noon, Topanga and Victory, we're going to honor four teachers this year, come to the Walk of Hearts.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, did you have an announcement? Okay, thank you, let's all please rise for adjourning motions. If I can ask the members of our public out of respect to please stand up for adjourning motions, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Madam President, and colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Eva Gardea, a resident of her beloved Los Angeles since the 1960s. Eva passed away peacefully earlier this week after a year-long battle with dementia. Eva arrived in the United States soon after the end of World War II, and only after her father said it was safe to go there now. She dedicated her young life to working to help support her younger brothers and sisters get an education in Mexico. Many of her siblings became professionals in Mexico, a point of pride for Eva. She was also fully committed to her Catholic faith, attending St. Francis of Assisi Church in Silver Lake for more than 50 years. She taught Sunday School and served communion multiple times a week. The church was her second home and her community. Indeed, one of her last requests was to create a small scholarship fund at St. Francis School for families that need financial support. The third pillar of her life was her son, Jose Gardea. Eva saw him excel in school and graduate from UCLA. She carefully observed his professional development while working at Los Angeles City Hall, one of his last jobs being the chief of staff to council member Ed Reyes. Eva always reminded her son that working in public service was a deep responsibility to every member of the public. Eva loved Los Angeles and the United States. After becoming a US citizen, one of her proudest moments was voting for President Barack Obama. Eva was reflective of an entire generation of immigrants who risked everything to come to this country and raise a family, an act that for her, as with so many, proved to be a blessing. Eva Gardea will be deeply missed but never forgotten, may she rest in peace, and we send our prayers and love to her family and to Jose Gardea, her son. Thank you.
Yeah, I did not know Mr. Gardea's mom had passed away, so, Mr. Weezer, if I can add my name to that adjourning motion? Any other adjourning motions to my left? Any other adjourning motions to my right? Saying none, have a good weekend, our meeting is adjourned.